Good morning. I now call to order the organizational meeting of the Newport News School Board for Monday, July 1st, 2019. A quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. We appreciate all in attendance. The purpose of this meeting is to approve organizational matters as required by the Code of Virginia. I am opening this organizational meeting because the term of the school board chairman expires at midnight on June 30th. As customary, the superintendent opens and leads the meeting until the school board appoints a chairman, and we will do so in this meeting today. Before we conduct the invocation and pledge, I'd like to take a moment to welcome our newest board member, Mr. Nazir Gore, the 2019-20 student representative to the school board. Mr. Gore is a senior at Warwick High School, and good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Thank you for joining us. Let's give him a round of applause. And Nazir, we look forward to serving with you, and we'll provide an official introduction at the August meeting, but we appreciate you being here this morning.
Thank you.
I also would like to welcome Mr. Andy Perry, our Division-wide and Middle School Teacher of the Year, Mr. Perry, who will provide the invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Good morning, Mr. Perry.
Good morning. Ladies and gentlemen, it is an honor to have an opportunity to address the school board as you prepare for the 2019-2020 school year. The business before you is vitally important as we welcome our new class of students to Newport News and congratulate our most recent graduates. I implore you to prioritize the task before you in order to make decisions that will benefit our community stakeholders most effectively and efficiently. I have brought with me some fruits of our labor from this year, from the Crittenden Garden, and I look forward to the growth for our new year. Ladies and gentlemen, good luck, and thank you. We will now rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And thank you, Mr. Perry. Andy is a seventh grade life science and advanced physical science teacher at Crittenden Middle School, where he also serves as the STEM lead teacher. Mr. Perry's instruction extends beyond the classroom, and as you see this morning, he and the students have a greenhouse, they've built a water tower, and an automatic gardening system powered by solar panels. And we appreciate you bringing some of the fruits of your labor with you this morning. Andy, it's an honor for you to be here, and we thank you for your service to the school division. So with that being said, our first item on the agenda is the board organization. At this time, the school board will elect a chairman for the 2019-20 school year. Are there any nominations?
Mr. Superintendent, I have a nomination for chairman. I nominate Mr. Gary Hunter.
Second.
There's a nomination and a second. Any further nominations? Hearing none. For the office of superintendent are closed. And we'll go ahead and take the roll. Superintendent?
Chair.
School board chairman, right? One job, just one job. All right. Hearing none, and having a second. Any reservations? Any conversations? All right. Mrs. Buffalo, we'll take the roll.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
Motion carries five zero to elect Mr. Hunter as chairman.
I would now like to introduce our 2019-20 school board chairman, Mr. Gary Hunter. Let's give him a round of applause. And Mr. Hunter, I will relinquish the gap.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. I tell you what, superintendent, you and I can change pay, it would be fine with me. If you want to, we could swap a little bit. Anyway, well, again, I want to first thank my board members to, again, appoint me again for, I guess, a third year. I just want to thank each one of you very much. I look forward to this 2019-2020 year. Before I say anymore, we're going to move the agenda. My first order of business would begin at this time, the school board will elect a vice chair for the 2019-2020 school year. Are there any nominations?
Mr. Chair, I would like to nominate Ms. Lisa Searls Law as vice chair.
You heard the motion, I mean nomination. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Yeah, you heard the nomination. Are there any further nominations for the office of vice chair? There being none, Ms. Lisa Searls Law has been nominated to serve as the 2019-2020 school board vice chair. Is there any discussion regarding the nomination? There being none, Ms. Lisa Searls Law has been selected as the 2019-2020 school year, and we need to call a roll first. Ms. Buffalo, call a roll.
My pleasure. Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
Motion carries five zero for Mrs. Searls Law as board vice chair.
Okay. And in Ms. Searls Law's absence, I know she's going to do a phenomenal job. She had already had some work-related business that she could not be here today, so we will pass on that outstanding information and selection. So that being the case, we'll move the agenda to our consent agenda. Items number 2.01 Personnel Report, 2.02 Minutes Special Meeting on June 4th, 2019, 2.03 Minutes From Work Session, June 18th, 2019, 2.04 Minutes Special Meeting, June 18th, 2019, 2.05 2018-2019 School Board Meeting Calendar, 2.06 Appointment of the Clerk and Deputy Clerk of the School Board, 2.07 Appointment of the Agent and Deputy Agents of the School Board, 2.08 Appointment of Persons to Serve in the Absence of the Superintendent, 2.09 Reimbursement Resolution for the Use of EPSA Funding, 2.10 Impact Aid Authorization, 2.11 2019-2020 Out-of-Vision School Tuition, 2012, I mean 2.12 2019-2020 Tuition Rate for Non-Virginia Resident Students, 2.13 Resolution Amending Resolution 0911. Do you have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
You heard the motion and the second. Time for the question. There being none, Ms. Buffalo, please call a roll.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Yes, sir.
At this time, we'll turn it over to Dr. Parker for personnel actions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In that consent agenda were three personnel appointments, which are leadership appointments in our central office staffing, and I'd like to, at this time, introduce our new chief academic officer, Dr. James Poehl. James, would you stand, please? And Dr. Poehl is currently serving as the Executive Director of Secondary Teaching and Learning in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Dr. Poehl has been an educator for 23 years. He began his career as a math teacher in Norfolk Public Schools. He worked as an assistant principal in Pasquetank County High School in Elizabeth City and at Cox High School in Virginia Beach. He continued his career in Virginia Beach by serving as the principal in positions at Princess Anne Middle School and Princess Anne High Schools, where he, before moving on to central office. In addition, he has worked for many years as an adjunct faculty member in Old Dominion's Educational Leadership and Policy Program. And Dr. Poehl is accompanied by his lovely wife. Go ahead and introduce your wife, James.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. This is my wife, Darcy Poehl. She is also a high school teacher in Virginia Beach and has been for 23 years.
That's right. And welcome both. We'd like to welcome you, James, to Newport News Public Schools where good things are happening. We look forward to your leadership. Let's give Dr. Poehl a round of applause. And second, I'd like to introduce our new Executive Director of Curriculum and Development, Dr. Joanne Jones. And, Dr. Jones, would you please? There you go. Dr. Jones is currently serving as the Director of Curriculum and Instruction in Caroline County Public Schools. Dr. Jones began her career as an educator 28 years ago as a high school English teacher in Hertford County Public Schools, where she also served as an assistant principal. Dr. Jones served in 12 years as an elementary and secondary principal in Birdie County Public Schools, Hertford County Public Schools, and Halifax County Public Schools. In addition, she's worked as a transitional coach for the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, and she is also a former school board member in Birdie?
Hertford.
Hertford County. Dr. Jones is currently still in Caroline County and will be joining us once we work out the transitional timeframe. Dr. Jones, do you have any family members here you'd like to introduce?
I have my daughter Cameron. Cameron is a student at Hampton University, so.
All right. Congratulations, and let's give Dr. Jones a round of applause. Our third nominee is, we didn't have to look far from home, she's a homegrown educator and instructional leader. I'd like to introduce Lori Wall as our new Director of Elementary Curriculum. Ms. Wall is currently serving with us as the elementary instructional supervisor for K through two?
K through three.
K through three. And in Newport News, Ms. Wall has served as an elementary teacher, reading recovery teacher, early literacy interventionist, reading specialist, elementary instructional specialist, and instructional supervisor. We've gotten a lot of work out of her. In addition, is your husband here with you today?
Actually, he's at swim team with my kids.
All right, and he is also an employee. All right, he's also an employee as well with Newport News. Ms. Wall is also an adjunct faculty member with the College of William &amp; Murray where she trains reading specialists. So a very strong instructional leader. She'll take over our elementary program. We're so excited to have your leadership impact our students, so thank you so much, and we're looking forward to good work. Let's give Lori a. And that concludes the appointments for this meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. And again, how about another congratulations to those three new. There's noise here at Newport News Public Schools where great things are happening. We have one action item, item number 3.01, new review, part of your package, there's a number of them, school division goals and objectives, which was new, tobacco and nicotine vapor revisions, we had the comprehensive plan, which was new, the school board member compensation, which was new, the school board member liability insurance, which was new, school board work session and retreat, which was revised, school board activity fund, which was new, teacher planning time revised, school board, no, school year, school day revision, physical examination of students, remove grace, period, and then we had the transfer student Wade credit draft. So can we have a motion for that approval?
So moved.
You heard the motion and you heard the second. Time for the question?
One question, are all of the revisions required by the General Assembly, all the proposed revisions?
There were a variety that were General Assembly, then there were VSBA, and then also there were division policies in that package. Mrs., Tracy can answer any questions you may have regarding any individual policies, but there were three drop motivators behind those. One is General Assembly legislation, the other was VSBA policy revisions, and the other were division, division, internal revisions.
And they were all presented to us last month?
Yes.
Okay. All of them were presented?
Yes.
Okay.
Any more questions? There being none, Ms. Buffalo, please call a roll.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to reports and information. First is 4.01 Availability of Policies and Procedure Manus. Is there any, is the notice? Oh, this is just, oh, this is just a required notice, the annual notice to the public that copies of the divisions, policies, and procedure manuals are available to the public and employees in the libraries of each school, in each Newport News Public Library, and online on the Policies and Procedures website at www.nnschools.org/policies and on the NMPS internet. Okay. And we have another report, school board assignments. Those were in your package? And then we can just, once you make your selections, you can pass those on to Ms. Buffalo. And then our last report would be comments from the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I've wrapped up my first year in Newport News Public Schools, and I have truly enjoyed getting to know not only each of you, but also the staff and our leadership in our schools and our students. I'm looking forward to continuing my work and to make the school division a great place for all students to learn, work, and grow. Congratulations again to Mr. Hunter for your second-year appointment, and Vice Chairman Searls Law. Look forward to working with you and as we prepare students to be college, career, and citizen-ready. The mayor hosted his first city and school advisory committee meeting last Tuesday to provide us with an opportunity for regular open dialogue about the goals and needs of the school division. Following that meeting, the school board and city council held a joint meeting, a joint work session, to discuss capital improvement procedures and the plan for Huntington Middle School. The city manager provided some insight into a recently proposed budget at that time as well. We have a new joint meeting scheduled for September 10th at 4:00 p.m. I'd like to just speak briefly and say that I felt the dialogue around the table was productive, although we did not see everything that we wanted in that budget that's presented by the city manager. I do believe that there was some good dialogue around how do we meet some of the challenges of the school division in terms of our facilities, Huntington Middle School moving forward, and I look forward to further dialogue with the city as we work through some of those challenges. Last week, we also held our first summer leadership conference, and a lot of dancing going on. Some folks still have sore feet in here. Over the course of the two days, our school leadership teams attended several professional development sessions moderated by our Department of School Leadership and the Curriculum Development Department. I'd like to thank all of our leaders in the room and who attended and participated and supported the leadership retreat for our principals and assistant principals last week. It was a very good two days of learning for our building leaders. I also have some good news to share. Six of our schools earned the Virginia Board of Education Exemplar Performance School Awards. These new awards recognize schools for exceeding state accreditation standards, narrowing the achievement gap, and improving outcomes for students. Two schools earned the Board of Education's highest achievement award, Deer Park Elementary School and General Stanford Elementary Schools. And four schools earned the Board of Education's Continuous Improvement Award, Discovery STEM Academy, Dutrow Elementary School, Sanford Elementary School, and Denby High School. Congratulations to their staff and students. Let's give them a round of applause. And we look forward to bringing a full accreditation update to the board later this summer in our August meeting to give the board some insight into how our other schools are doing. The STEP Work Readiness Program is underway. I attended the first day of our STEP program where we had roughly about 160 students learning for four days in preparation for their work experiences, which they will take on next week. They'll be assigned to their work sites. And Spark will begin next week as well. This summer, we will serve over 6,000 students in various Spark programs. Over the next two months, we are also focused on staff professional development. The Ignite Summer Learning Academy offers nearly 80 course offerings across all content areas and grade levels. The classes are organized into three strands aligned with our teaching and learning framework. I encourage our instructional staff to take advantage of these opportunities and visit our website for a complete list of course offerings. All staff members are encouraged to attend our annual Innovate Technology Conference, which will be held on August 7th and 8th at Heinz Middle School. Our technology staff has been working hard and preparing for some great sessions for our staff, from innovate teaching practices to state-of-the-art website practices. Now, I'll ensure that Tracy, that, excuse me, Mrs. Buffalo, puts the schedule for those events on your calendars if you'd like to stop by. Some great learning, a lot of teachers come in over the summer to get some professional development, and it is not required, and it is a packed house, which is something that is very interesting here in Newport News. So visit our website to register for those course offerings, and we look forward to seeing some of our instructional leaders in the house on August 7th and 8th as well. Couple of reminders, all schools and offices will be closed on Thursday in observance of Independence Day, and we are now on our summer schedule, so we're working on Monday through Thursdays, and Friday's offices are closed. And that will be closed through August 16th, so we'll be on that summer schedule till August 16th. I wish everyone a relaxing and rejuvenating summer, and I encourage everyone to take a well-deserved break and enjoy some summer activities. And that concludes my remarks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. So we'll move the agenda to 5.01, Protocols for Addressing the Board. Are there no cards? Okay, we'll move on then to matters by the school board. First up will be Mr. Nazir Gore. Welcome to the board. So this is your time to let folks hear your comments.
Okay. I believe that everyone has faith in something, whether it be through educational means, children, or even science. But right now, in this instance, I want to thank all of you for putting your faith in me, and I hope to make the 2020 school year a productive one. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. And welcome aboard again.
Thank you.
Mr. Simons?
Thank you very much. I enjoyed being invited to attend the apprenticeship graduation for some electrical workers. As many of you know, I am the chair of the board for New Horizons Regional Education Centers, the Career and Technical Center there, and I was invited to speak, and I just want to remind our students, when you're in high school, to kind of take control of your destiny. And we want you to go to college, but we also have other opportunities for you in career and technical education at New Horizons. And one of the opportunities that's out there for high school graduates is to go into apprenticeships. And a couple of the apprentices that I met in electrical work were making $80,000 for 10 months' work. So that's amazing, but it was a five-year apprenticeship, so I just want to recommend that to everyone. And I again want to thank the graduates this year. You know, school is hard, and I keep trying to remind everybody in the community that the demands on our students are really hard right now. It's not just about, you know, learning, but you're assessed with these SOL tests. You're tested all the time. That diploma means something. And as educators, our job is difficult too, because we've got to keep up with the technology and make sure that our students are ready for the jobs of tomorrow, and that means teaching them things about coding and computer science, like things that we didn't have to do before. So we do need the community's support as we meet this challenge. The challenge of having our kids ready for testing and having them ready for the high-tech economy. We need the community's support. And that means that we need to pay teachers well, we need to continually give raises, that means our budget needs to grow every year. So I would just ask the community to think about supporting Newport News Public Schools and understand that our mission is difficult, and we need all hands on deck to move our city's education system forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Simons. Mr. Ely?
I want to say congratulations to all the students that participated in the Congressional Art Competition. I was fortunate to be on the board for that, for Congressman Robert Scott, it went very well. We had it last week in DC. I also like to thank all the kids for all their hard work that they did over the school year for graduating. They got a summer, and thanks to all our great Spark programs to start next week, they have a lot of store for them. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Ely. Dr. Best?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I too concur with my fellow school board member, Ms. Simons, as far as it being very difficult for the graduates. I would first like to congratulate the graduates, and I also would like to thank everyone that works with our students, because in addition to educating them, we also have that facet called social media that just adds a whole nother dynamic to what we have to do. So congratulations to the graduates, and thank you to all of you that work so hard with our students to make sure that they are successful. I would like to wish all of those students that are heading to college and whatever other career aspirations, I wish them well, and just to remember the foundational things that they learned here in Newport News Public Schools. I would like to thank the public for voting for me and for having me to serve this first year. I have learned so much this year. I'm looking forward to the next three years, and I hope to be a voice for them. So I encourage everyone to get a little rest this summer and get prepared for a great next school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Best. Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to congratulate the three new administrators. Look forward to your leadership, and thank you for choosing Newport News to serve. Also, I'd like to thank Dr. Parker and all administration staff for graduating, I think with close to 1,600, 1,700 students?
I think 1,200. Am I in the 1,200 range?
About 1,200 students. Appreciate that. A great job on ensuring that, you know, we are producing young people that is ready for this crazy world out there. Also, congratulations to the chairman and the new select vice chairman. I just want to say that, you know, we as a board is required to get results, and this is a result-oriented business. We put mandates on our children to succeed. We put mandates on our children to meet certain gates. We meet certain mandates on our kids to graduate. And so I, me as a board member, I view my role as the same. It's great to have a lot of dialogue, but dialogue does not bring you the things that this school division requires. We are required to bring results. We are required to ensure that this school is fully funded. Those are our mandates. And right now, the way I feel, I don't, I think we've not met some of those goals. So regardless of what we have to do, regardless of what relationships we have to mend, build, or cut loose, we are required to deliver results. This is not a popularity contest. This is not a position that you search accolades. This is a position to deliver results. So I hope this year, starting this fall, that we deliver results. Because it comes a point in time where we cannot point to the city council and go, hey, you know, you guys are not giving us what we want. I think we have to look internally, and we really have to do some self-assessments and ensure that we are doing the things that's going to create results. If not, we need to set those triggers in place. As I mentioned before, there comes a point in time where you have to say, well, guess what? If this does not happen, what are the courses of action one, two, and three? And stick to those. Excuse me for rambling on, but thank you for the time, Mr. Chairman. I'm looking forward to another year. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Brown?
All right. Well, as we close out a year, it's a great time to reflect. I want to congratulate Superintendent Dr. Parker for bringing us three great selections of officers. Looking forward to the great things that you're going to be doing in this upcoming year, and really excited about the team that has been assembled. We've seen some fantastic results this year. It's been, I think it's been a really good year, positive year. A lot of good things have happened. We have made some significant movement. I like that now we've moved past talking about whether or not Huntington will be funded. will be funded, uh, but it's a matter of how much and when. So, I think that, uh, I want to reflect on that, that those are some good, good accomplishments. And we'll look forward to, uh, this next year, we need to, to move past, uh, of course, uh, Huntington and move into other, uh, school facilities as well, uh, where we do need some, some additional funding. So, as we kick off that capital improvement budget season, uh, I want to, us to look forward to, uh, opening up the dialogue for, uh, for our, truly all of our needs, uh, which are, as, as we mentioned before, which are, which are greater than, uh, than Huntington. With that in mind, it's been a, a great, uh, graduation season, looking forward to another graduation that's gonna take place in August. I'm, um, uh, excited about the graduates that we will be honoring, who will be walking across the stage. Their graduation is just as momentous, and if not, probably more momentous because of, uh, the challenges that they go through, and, and so proud of those graduates who will persevere. So, there are, there are students who are in summer school with us right now who are going to persevere, they've made the commitment, and I really, uh, appreciate that, hats off to you and honor that commitment, and, uh, looking forward to, as a board member, uh, seeing them come across the stage and, uh, shaking some of their hands, uh, and, and seeing that, uh, those, those graduate numbers. Those, those are really the folks who get me, uh, very excited, uh, and that's how we get to our, uh, such a high, uh, on-time graduation rate, uh, I think is, is the hard work that is being done right now in summer school for those, uh, for those students who have decided to stick it out. And we know that that is money in our economy and money in their pockets. Uh, and so, that's where, you know, I want to, at this point, pause and reflect on, just really a great year, and hats off to all of the, uh, administration and the teachers and the staff who, uh, work so hard and, and entirely so on behalf of our students, that, uh, great things are happening in Newport News, and great things are possible in Newport News, that really, uh, with our, uh, schools, everything and anything is possible to the, to the, um, uh, wildest dreams of a child. I was pausing and reflecting this weekend on, uh, the discussions that are made about public schools, and, uh, I like to say the demise of public school has been greatly exaggerated. Uh, I was just, uh, talking with my wife, we were going over the, um, schools for our own, own child, and thinking, reflecting on our chances. Uh, you look at most Ivy League schools, and I'll pick out Harvard and Princeton as an example, Harvard, sixty-three percent of all the students who come in to their entering class are from public schools around this country, not from elite private schools, uh, but from public schools. So, the same schools that our children attend, those are, those are your kids' chances of getting into Harvard. Getting into Princeton is sixty percent. Sixty percent of all the kids who are entering the classes at Princeton come from public schools. So, I want to just encourage the, all the teachers and the staff who are working with our kids, that you are really the, the dream builders, you are the ones who are going to enable and allow, uh, even the wildest dreams of our children, and what, with the work that you do, it is possible. You make it possible, and then really, the, what education does, it's, changes the life of a, a child, changes the life of a family, changes an entire generation, and that's how you really turn around an economy in the long run. And with all that being said, uh, Mr. Chairman and the rest of the members of board, I want to continue to challenge us that we need to, uh, on the operating budget side, we need to get down to a revenue sharing, model revenue sharing agreement, because that's what our students need, that's what they deserve, and it's a revenue sharing agreement. Sure that we, I want to have an overwhelming share of that sixty percent of the kids who are going to Ivy League schools to come from Newport News Public Schools. I want us to have an overwhelming share. We already have, I think, our, an outside share.
Right.
Um, more than, more than most other school divisions, uh, around the country. We have an outside share, believe it or not, uh, despite what you may have been told in the, uh, in the media and in the public, uh, but I want us to have an even greater overwhelming share of those students who are attending the top schools, uh, in this country, and all the students who are going to, as well, the apprentice schools and, and the other elite trade, um, schools around this, around this country. So, getting to our revenue sharing agreement, that's critical. This next year, I will, we really focus on that. Uh, but in the near term, uh, focusing on capital, uh, budget, that, let's make sure that we focus on giving a higher percentage of the budget than we have been, uh, in previous years, and, uh, continue, uh, moving forward with, uh, revitalizing our buildings. All right, thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Brown. Uh, I guess it's be, from the time, uh, we go, go back to work and get to work. So, again, great things are happening in Newport News Public Schools. Uh, first, I want to thank, um, Dr. Parker for an outstanding first year here in Newport News Public Schools. You did not let us down. Um, we're not at the top yet, but guess what? We've climbed a lot, and we've taken many steps this year, uh, to reaching that goal. So, again, thank you and the team that you have, um, gathered around you, and thank those three brand-new, uh, appointees, uh, congratulating on your appointment. Welcome, Mr. Gore. You have big, big, big shoes to fill. Uh, um, this is my, uh, again, guess today would be my, sorry, my sixth year on the board, and every student rep has been outstanding, I mean, absolutely outstanding, and I, and I have no, no problem that you will, uh, even top them. So, again, welcome. To Vice Chair, uh, our former Vice Chair, Mr. Brown, uh, on behalf of this, this board, uh, we really, really appreciate all the guidance that you have given us, and particularly for the raises for the teachers. I, I guess we can tell you, you are the raise agent.
And does Mr. Brown have a new position with V S B A?
And, Mr. Mr. Brown is currently the Vice President, Vice Chair of the Tidewater Region, uh, for the V S B A, and now seeks, with our approval, he seeks the, uh, chair position. So, um, we look forward to that. You've got six board members standing right behind you, and I, I know you're gonna be very successful, you're gonna win, and again, there'll be another great thing happening in Newport News Public Schools where, uh, Newport News will be running the Tidewater District and held with Mr. Uh, Mr. Brown. So, Mr. Brown, uh, again, thank you for the two years, uh, sitting right beside me, and, um, uh, I know there are great things happening for you, and that you will prove to be a gem for Newport News Public Schools at your next appointment. So, Mr. Brown, I want to give you a. I, I did have an opportunity on last Wednesday, I was invited to, um, give, uh, opening remarks at the Leadership Matters Conference. Let me tell you, I, I was gonna stay all day. I couldn't, uh, but, uh, the energy in the place was, uh, was powerful, um, the, the teachers, comments from Mr. Wright, he says, one thing that stuck out, he says, hey, if I walk around and I see you with a frown on your face, I'm gonna give you a hug. I'm gonna find out what's wrong. And, uh, well, we're leaders, and that's our, Dr. Parker stated to us, uh, or to those that were in attendance, he says, hey, you know, leaders need to find out, you know, what makes us great, and we need to fix things that were right, and fix things, no, do things better that are right, things that are wrong, we need to fix them. And basically, he says, you know, what we need to really look at is the, uh, look what follows the but. Newport News is outstanding organization, school system, but, and that but is a reality. So, our superintendent told us to, uh, follow the but. And so, and so, if you didn't learn anything from that, particularly was to follow the but, because those buts will get you in trouble, and, um, those are the problems, and we're gonna fix those buts, uh, this year. And so, Dr. Parker, I did take that from, uh, my short time being there. So, remember, let's follow the buts, and if we can get rid of those buts, we will, uh, have another successful year. So, that being said, um, I'm looking forward again to a, a twenty nineteen, twenty twenty year, I want to thank my board members for having the trust in me to lead this team for a third year. Uh, again, thank you very much for your, um, confidence in me. Uh, that being said, um, if there's no other comments, or what have you, we need to go into a closed session, I believe. So, Mr. Brown, or?
Okay. I do have a motion, Mr. Chairman, uh, pursuant to section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A of the Code of Virginia, subsection one. I move the school board convene a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the performance of a specific public officer.
You heard the motion? Is there a second?
Second.
You heard the motion, second. Time for the question. There being none, Ms. Buffalo, please call a roll.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. We will convene into our closed meeting.[1717.23]